I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Rose?
Here.
Shields?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of March 9, 2012, as submitted and prepared by the clerk, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Will a clerk please call the roll?
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting. There will be several items on the agenda for next council meeting. The Health, Safety, Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
There will be no report for Special Legislation Committee. The Streets and Sidewalk Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
And Water Utilities Committee, Mr. Colosar?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's numerous items on the agenda tonight, and I myself might say a little bit about it, or our City Finance Director, our City Engineer, Patrick Patton. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action. For the Finance Committee, we have 1255, a budget amendment; 1256, amending ordinance 177-11; 1257, Workplace Wellness Grant Program; 1258, amending salaries and benefits code for the municipal court; 1259, approving Medina City Enterprise Zone minutes; addendum 211166, Memorial Park Pavilion; 1260, headstone restoration for the Old Town Cemetery Phase II; 1261, RFPs for Medina Railway Inspection, Testing, and Repairs; 1262, bids for Beechwood Drive Reconstruction Phase I; 1263, qualification statements, bridge replacement and repair projects; 1264, LPA project agreement with ODOT, West Smith Road Phase I; and 1265, liability and property insurance renewal. Reports from municipal officers? Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority at 850 Walter Road in Medina sent me an email announcing that it has over 1,500 names on their Section 8 waiting list. Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program is the county's main source of rental assistance to low-income households. Forty percent of those served are either elderly and/or elderly and disabled. Medina County is currently limited to 530 households that can be served with these federal funds, so they have 530 that they're serving and another 1,500 on the waiting list. But it's still best, what they recommend it's still best to be on the list, is that's the only way to be considered for future assistance. And the deadline for getting on this year's waiting list is April 1, 2012. So if folks are in need of that, they're asked to contact the Metropolitan Housing Office at 850 Walter Road. The Big Day of Serving is Saturday, April 21. Local church leaders in Medina are hosting a big day of serving. That's to help some seniors, to help in our parks, and just some other community service projects. This day invites volunteers to various locations across the country to take part in community service activities, and Medina has been one of the sites selected for this cleanup. If you're interested in having work performed, you can contact Don Conwell at my office, 722-9020, or DConwell@MedinaH.org. And if interested in serving, you can go to the website to register at www.bigdayof serving.com, and then it'll give you a list of locations, and hopefully you select Medina. And then last but not least, the National Day of Prayer events are this year, Thursday, May 3. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be at Williams on the Lake from 7:00 to 8:30 a.m. The guest speaker will be Medina County Commissioner Adam Friedrich. Noon prayer service on the square, and evening prayer service at the New Heartland Community Church, 3400 Weymouth Road, from 7:00 p.m. to about 8:30 p.m. The only event that you need a ticket, and there's a charge for, is the prayer breakfast because of the food served, and those are available at a number of the local churches, as well as my office, for $15 each. And the afternoon and evening service are free. No tickets are required, no reservations. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a number of things on the agenda that originated with finance that I will comment on when we get there. The only thing I want to report at this time is that all residents are required to file an income tax return with CCA for city income tax, and there are two more opportunities to get assistance with that from CCA. They handle the collections for the city of Medina. One of those is Wednesday, April 4, from 1:00 till 8:00 in the afternoon. And then the final one is Saturday, April 14, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Both of those are at the Rec Center, and I want to again thank Mike Wright and the Rec Center staff for accommodating us. If you need help with the CCA forms, you can do that there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lieutenant Brooke Beckler, Acting Plea Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Since the horrible events of Chardon a few weeks ago, we've been working closely with the schools. We've taken a low-tolerance approach to incidents occurring in the school. As of this evening, we have charged seven juveniles within the Medina City School for either menacing, making threats, or actual assaults. And we'll continue to respond to those incidents immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items. The next Main Street Medina Meet Your Business Neighbor event is set for Tuesday, April 24, at Pam Miller's Graham Mercy Gallery Store, and the time again will be set from 8:00 a.m. to 9:30, and they are working on getting the flyers out for that. So if any of you can attend, that'd be great. And then also, the city, along with Main Street Medina and the Medina Chamber of Commerce, have arranged for two ribbon-cutting and grand opening celebrations of two new businesses, both of them in the historic district. The first one is IDEA Jewelry Store. It stands for Inspired Designs by Elizabeth Ann. They're located at 123 West Washington Street, and that one is scheduled for this Friday, March 30, at 10:00 a.m. I think all of you were sent invitations. And then we have another one scheduled for 2020 Photography Studio, located at 115 West Liberty Street, and that one's set for Friday, April 6, at 10:00 a.m. And we will be sending the invitations out probably very soon. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hannon, the Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to let council and the public know that we are moving forward with implementation of the U.S. EPA Brownfield Coalition Grant. Our coalition partners will be meeting over the next couple of weeks to begin prioritizing the first round of sites that we'll target with the funding. If anyone has sites that they think may be a fit, those would be any commercial or industrial properties which are currently vacant or underutilized and have real or perceived environmental issues, please contact Kimberly Rice in the ED Department or myself, and we can add those to our list as we begin to study sites. And our next boards and commissions will be on April the 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick notes. Saturday, April 14, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, is our Just Kids Stuff Garage Sale at the Rec Center, which is a partnered event with the Medina Early Childhood PTA. This is your opportunity to sell your children's old toys, clothes, sports equipment, and more. Shopper's admission is $5 from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and $1 from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Usually have over 50 vendors, so there's no need to worry about the, and there's no need to worry about the weather because this is an indoor sale. And then lastly, our next scheduled advisory board meeting is Thursday, April 19, at the Rec Center at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of updates on two of our projects. The South Court Street and Sturbridge Intersection Upgrade Project, the signal work is going to begin next week. Next Monday, April 2, the traffic signal will be dark. In other words, it won't be on from approximately 8:00 a.m. to approximately 4:00 p.m. Where there will be law enforcement officers on-site, present during the entire outage to direct traffic. Appreciate the public's cooperation during that time. Secondly, I'm happy to announce that the project to interconnect the city's traffic signals to the railroad's gates and flashers at three different locations in the city started today. When this project's completed, and should be about two to three weeks, one of the benefits will be that the flashing signal at Smith and Huntington will finally be able to put into full operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, Park and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. You can visit our city parks today. However, the parks officially open Monday, April 2. The staff is busy preparing the parks with mowing the grass in March. We're raking and blowing the leaves and just grooming the ball fields and soccer fields in preparation, or in anticipation for the upcoming season. We'll also be dropping off the Porte Johns during that time. The Forestry Department will be planting 77 street trees throughout the city. With these current temperatures and the great weather that we've been experiencing, we're about three to four weeks ahead of our normal planting time, and so we're going to adjust our planting time by beginning sometime next week and completing within the next two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. City has saved significantly in the purchase of salt and the usage this year. The only issue the Street Superintendent and I are having is the finding of adequate storage for the city's obligation for the state contract. We are hopeful in our dealings with the vendor, Morton Salt Company, that they will allow for the unused contract amount to be stored at their mines or depots. The state, other political subdivisions, and the county is in the same situation. We have been invoiced $136,005.07 for the 2011 and 2012 winter. However, $45,000 of that was from the obligation from the state's contract from the previous winter. So in total, for this winter season, I'm proud to say that we have purchased a total of $90,651.97 compared to $231,935 last winter. Enough about winter. The County Central Processing Facility is hosting their annual spring appliance roundup April 9 through the 13. That's Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and on Saturday, April 14, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The CPF, the Central Processing Facility, is located at 8700 Lake Road in Seville. Please feel free to contact them for this roundup. Their number is 330-769-1273 with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Otters, Communications, and Petitions? There are none. Unfinished business? None. Introduction of visitors? Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach their front right microphone and state their name and address so they can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody who wishes to address council? Sir? If you could step on our right front microphone, give your name and address.
Okay. My name is Ray Carlyle. I live at 616 Roosevelt Avenue, Kent, Ohio, right now, and I'm fixing up a house on Branch Road west of the city limits. And I feel that the 25 mile an hour speed limit that's on that street after you pull off Route 18 is too low, is too slow of a speed limit. Pretty much a school zone speed limit, 20, is a school zone speed limit. 25 is really not that much different, but I understand that most of the city's 25. And you're beyond Commerce where that supposedly stops. It's 55. Before that, on Route 18, it's 35. It's just too slow, and obviously, I just want to make a complaint. I will be living on Branch Road in the near future, and I just think it's just going to probably cause an accident, and I don't think that that's an unreasonable statement.
Okay. I mean, thank you. I think we could look at it from the Safety Director, and I know that most of the residential streets throughout the city, as you were informed, are 25 miles an hour, so I mean, I'm not sure what can be done. If you change one, everybody's going to be requesting for their street to be changed, but I guess we can look into that and see if there's any accommodation that can be made, but it may be difficult based upon the fact that the whole city's 25.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 51-12, and ordinance amending Section 91704 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to water rates. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank the Utility Rate Review Commission for all the time that they put into this. There's a, one of the things that they asked us to do and that council wanted is a comparison to other cities. This is available on the city's website, an address that should be on your TV right now. If you'd like to look at it and see how we compare to other cities, I think you'll do, you'll see that overall, we do very well. Again, I'd like to thank the commission for all their time. There's a lot of interest that they had to consider. The city's had several increases from our provider for the water, and we haven't passed those on, but eventually that catches up, and we have to make an adjustment, and this is the recommendation, so I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Richard Colosar?
Thank you. I'm going to dovetail to what the Finance Director just stated. The city of Medina, we get our water from Avon Lake, and we're kind of at their mercy. We haven't had a water rate increase since January of 2009, and we've been hit with an 8.4% last year, and an additional 9.3% this year, and possibility of additional 6% in '13, and additional 6% in '14. Now, you know, the Water Department's considered an enterprise fund. It should be able to function on the revenues that it receives. And we, as a city, and I think I can speak for council and the administration, we're trying to run this department as tight as possible and still provide everybody with a quality of service of water and make sure we keep up with the infrastructure and things of that nature. I mean, we, the Water Department had to borrow money internally to pay for our Progressive Drive water tank that we put in, I believe in 2006, because the accounts didn't have enough money. I know nobody wants to see a water rate increase, and I, again, just like Mr. Durham, I want to thank the Utility Rate Review for their process to come to us with a recommendation. Once that recommendation came, it went through Water and Utilities, and then Finance, and now it's here in front of us now. Utility Rate Review felt, they looked at a bunch of different scenarios, but what they implemented is more based on a consumption instead of just a flat percentage across the board. They looked at the small-end user, they looked at the high-end user, and they looked at the implementation and when these rate increases would go into effect. Want to get money in the coffers now, because like I said, these accounts are losing money, but also allow the commercial end of it, the commercial customers, to be able to plan for next year. I mean, we're almost a quarter of the way into 2012, and we wanted to give them time as well to plan for their budgets for '13. So again, none of us like to see increases. They do happen. We're trying to run a tight ship here, and I do want to appreciate Utility Rate Review for all their time and effort, and Mr. Durham as well for his time meeting with them to come with this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Just to put this in perspective a little bit, they, both the administration of Water and Utility Rate Review Committee and the Water Committee put a lot of work in this, but what does this mean for you and I? I guess for a family of four, you can look at about $2 a month if you have average consumption of a family of four. So that's kind of what your water bill will be modified by, but it all, again, it all depends on your consumption. But just so you know what we're talking about up here when we talk about a rate increase, that's kind of the ballpark that we're talking about, just so you can be informed about that. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on ordinance 51-12?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Ordinance 51-12 passes six zero.
Resolution 52-12, a resolution opposing state control of municipal income tax collection. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mayor?
Thank you. The Ohio Municipal League is requesting that cities pass ordinances in opposition to the state taking over income tax collection, as well as the Ohio Finance Association officers feel that it should be something under the philosophy of home rule that should be done with the local government, not with state control, as well as giving up the power, the power, the regulation, as well as having no control over, once those dollars are collected, what the fees are going to be charged to us, as well as how long it's going to take to get those tax dollars back from the state. And I respectfully ask city council to pass this resolution in opposition to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on a resolution?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Resolution 52-12 passes six zero.
Resolution 53-12, a resolution of intent relative to the ODOT Office of Job and Commerce Commitment to provide funding to widen the existing concrete pavement along a portion of West Smith Road to accommodate construction of a left turn lane. Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Patton?
Economic Development Director Kimberly Rice was very, she really deserves the credit for this. The ODOT Office of Jobs and Commerce has reviewed our project and is committed to donating or granting us $240,000 towards the Smith Road project, the portion we refer to as Phase II between Lake Road and the railroad tracks. The purpose to widen that to add a center-left turn lane.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, do you have anything further to add to that?
In addition to that, they have asked us to provide a statement for their brochure on the impact and the ease of the use of the program. So it was a pretty quick turnaround time, and I think the businesses that we contacted out there will be very happy when this project's completed.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on a resolution?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 53-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 54-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal with Arcadius U.S. Inc. for the preparation of a water distribution model and update for the city of Medina. Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Typically, every about five to six years, we do a update of our water distribution model to update our master plan. We use this. It's a very powerful tool to help us for future capital improvement projects in our water system. Last time we did it, I believe, was 2006, and then since then, we've had a number of changes to our water system. Mr. Colosar mentioned the progress state water tank. We also have a water main installation going on this year, so it's time to do it again, and it's very valuable to us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 54-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 55-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2012 Concrete Street Repair Program. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual project to remove and replace faulty sections of concrete streets. This year, we're asking for almost $500,000 for this work. It's the most we've asked for ever before, typically around $300,000 to $350,000. We'll be doing work on a number of streets all over the city. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 55-12 passes six zero.
Resolution 56-12, a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application for grant assistance with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for the Ohio EPA 319 Grant Program. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Hannon?
Thank you. With this grant, we plan to target creek restoration along the Champion Creek Corridor. This is part of implementing the Smith Road development plan that was established a couple of years ago, and we're looking to target on the section of the creek from Broadway to Guilford and probably look at several parcels within that stretch.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on a resolution?
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Resolution 56-12 passes six zero.
Resolution 57-12, a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application for grant assistance with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for the Ohio EPA SWIFT Grant Program. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Hannon?
Thank you. This grant program is targeting the 406 South Broadway property, which the city recently purchased. The Champion Creek Bike Path will run through this parcel to its western terminus at Broadway, and we would like to develop some trailhead access at that point. This is an innovative stormwater management grant, and we're applying for a surface parking lot which will include portions in a pervious concrete as a stormwater demonstration project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on a resolution?
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Resolution 57-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 58-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 172-11, passed December 12, 2011, 2011 carry forward. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that the council adopted a few years ago in conjunction with the five-year planning process that we do. I think the major reason for it, to explain it to people at home, there's kind of a cliche from 2011, therefore, that are being re-appropriated here in 2012.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Lamb? Lamb?
I'm thinking.
Oh.
Thought I was sleeping. Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Ordinance 58-12 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 59-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a right-of-entry agreement with Time Warner Cable relative to the work to be performed at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, and I moved to add it at this time.
Second with the emergency clause.
Mr. Huber, or Mayor?
Yeah. This is, Time Warner Cable needs to run the cable line to the site where the housing unit is going to be placed for university hospitals' helicopter operations, and this is critical. They can't locate there until the cable is in place and their computers are all hooked up, so they have access to the university network. Therefore, the emergency clause is requested. They had to wait about two weeks for us to get back on the council agenda to get this passed, and it's integral to having them operational there.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 59-12 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 60-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute two revocable use permits with Feeding Medina County, a nonprofit corporation, 901 Lafayette Road, to be used for the Medina Community Gardens.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was contacted by Sandy Calvert, who's here tonight, in regard to Feeding Medina County, looking for some land to create community gardens in both Ward One and in Ward One. We had available to us the Bolivar Alley Water Tank Lot that was vacant, and we were simply mowing it. That's in Ward One. It's walkable. There's parking available at the Salvation Army. Water's available there, so that was an ideal location within that ward. But then we also asked if they would be interested in another piece of land over by the truck scales, because the city owns a substantial amount of property that's being unused currently, and again, would be walkable from Don Court, from Liberty Plaza, from Branch Road Apartments. So these are revocable use permits, individual, one for the land at the scale, one for the land on Bolivar Alley, to permit the community gardens to take place, and it'll be operated by Feeding Medina County.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I think this is a worthwhile program, and I'm glad to see that we're participating in it and reaching out a little bit to help individuals grow their own produce, and hopefully, they can benefit from the fruits of their labor. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 60-12 passes 6-0.
Resolution 61-12, a resolution in support of an application to the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, PUCO, for funding assistance for state-funded lights and gates at the Guilford Boulevard, Wheeling and Lake Erie Crossing.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. Two years ago, in 2010, we asked the state PUCO to come out and assess this crossing for the potential of a state fund for lights and gates. At that time, the state felt it was a worthwhile project and presented an offer to the city where the city was responsible for approximately $46,000 at a $145,000 cost. At that time, the city chose not to pursue that. Councilman Colasar submitted their request again. We believe it is time with the extension of Roscoe Ewing Trail and increased traffic that that may cause for the public safety, both pedestrian and vehicular, that we should pursue installing lights and gates at that crossing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on a resolution?
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Resolution 61-12 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 62-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for qualifications, RFQs, to serve as bond counsel for the city of Medina.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, along with the next ordinance, are to solicit for qualifications for bond counsel and bond underwriter services. As you know, this is a proposal that I brought to the city council earlier this year to look at refinancing some of our outstanding bonds at the end of this year. We have a 2002 issue that we are able to refinance. It's callable date, the call date is December 1, 2012, so at the end of this year, and rates today are better than they were when this issue was issued in 2002. In addition to that, we get a shorter term, which generally results in a lower interest rate, and we also have a better credit rating now than we had in 2002. So all three of those things should combine for a fairly significant savings, and we're going to explore that possibility. Those are the first couple steps for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 62-12 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 63-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for qualifications, RFQs, to serve as bond underwriter for the city of Medina.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? I think Mr. Durham just explained it's the same as the previous ordinance, but this is for the bond underwriter. Is there any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Ordinance 63-12 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 64-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 172-11, passed December 12, 2011, amendments to the 2012 budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This project was initially slated to be paid for out of our 301 Fund, but it is a water project, so we're going to pay for it out of 546. 301 is general capital, 546 is water capital. It's a different source of funding. I want to keep that where it belongs.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 64-12 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 65-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 177-11, passed December 12, 2011, relative to the East Smith Smoke Rise Concord Water Line.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
This is a part of the last ordinance. They're both the same thing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 65-12 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 66-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the scope of services set forth in the engagement letter from Retzl &amp; Andrus LPA as it pertains to the establishment of a community improvement corporation, CIC, for the city of Medina.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Rice?
Thank you. This engagement letter is just to outline the services that will be provided by Retzl &amp; Andrus pertaining to the establishment of our community improvement corporation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll have to abstain from this vote since my employer is Retzl &amp; Andrus. Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Abstain.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 66-12 passes five yeas, one abstention.
We have one item to be added to the agenda. That's ordinance 67-12.
Move to add ordinance 67-12 to the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion adding ordinance 67-12? Would a clerk please call the roll on adding ordinance 67-12?
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Ordinance 67-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Wells Fargo Insurance Services of Ohio, LLC, for the city's property, casualty, and general liability insurance for the period of April 1, 2012 through April 1, 2013.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, and I moved to add it at this time.
Second on adding the emergency clause.
Any discussion on the emergency clause ordinance? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the city's property, casualty, and general liability insurance through Wells Fargo. It comes to you this evening after we received it late last week, Thursday or Friday. It's because it takes them quite a bit of time to review all of the history that the city's had, as well as the vehicles, the new building, the service garage, and they like to wait to as close to the renewal as possible. It generally comes each year, requiring the emergency clause, because it takes effect April 1, and I ask for you to pass this so we can maintain our insurance beyond next week.
Thank you. Any discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Would a clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 67-12 passes 6-0.
Are there any council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colasar?
I just want to remind the residents of Ward Three that there's going to be a Ward Three meeting next Monday, which is April 2, at 7:00 p.m. at Fire Station Three on Wadsworth Road. That is just due south of Smoke Rise Valley or just north of Stirbridge. So I urge anybody that lives in Ward Three, which, if you don't know where Ward Three is, it's basically the southeast section of town. Like I said, I urge everybody that would like to come out, voice some of their opinions, get a chance to come out and meet members of the administration and city council. It's a laid-back atmosphere, and we'd love to have you there, listen to you, and get some good dialogue so we could address your concerns and move forward with our community. Again, that's April 2, 7:00 p.m. at Fire Station Three on Wadsworth Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments?
Mr. President, I have one. I would just like to thank again Sandy Calvert for bringing the vegetable garden idea to the mayor and to city council. It's a great idea. And Sandy, your work in the county, and in the city and in the county as well, is wonderful and makes this county and this city the great place that it is to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments?
I just have two. This past Tuesday, we met with the county commissioners as one of our joint meetings, and we had some good discussion with the commissioners and some collaboration efforts we can attempt to look at and see where we go. Some issues came up with some of our joint projects that we currently have in place that we're addressing, but all seems to be going pretty well with respect to the projects that we are currently involved in. We'll be addressing those concerns, and again, we'll probably have another meeting with them next year, just to get an update and see what other areas that we can collaborate on, or we can move both the county and the city forward. The final comment here is we do have our first budget meeting. I think everybody's excited about that. On Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 5:30, it's going to be Mr. Pacoli's departments. It's going to be the Water Department and the Sanitation Department, so we encourage everybody to show up and ask questions and listen to what we have to say with regard to our budget. We do budget a little differently here in Medina. We do a five-year budget, and we'll be looking at the fifth year of the Water and Sanitation Department, and also reviewing how Mr. Pacoli's doing with the current status of both the Water and Sanitation. So it should be a pretty good meeting and pretty lively discussion. No more council comments. We're going to do the Ward One council vacancy interviews at this time, so I'll break for like one minute, and anybody who would like to leave or has to leave can do so, and then we'll start right back up here with the Ward One council vacancy interviews. It's okay, too. The Ward One seat was vacated by Andrea Bedell Ware a few weeks ago as she relocated outside the city limits, of which one of the requirements to serve on city councils is that you are a city resident for at least two years. With her exiting the city, that left a vacancy in the Ward One council seat. We submitted requests for applicants about a month ago, six weeks ago, and March 15 was the deadline by which anybody who'd wanted to fill the Ward One council seat should submit and fill out the application and the questionnaire. We had three individuals in Ward One submitted applications to fill the vacant council seat. We have, in no particular order, these orders were selected by Kathy Patton through a random process, selecting names off a desk. So the order is Brian Hilberg, John Wetzel, and Daniel Coleman. Those are the three individuals that reside in Ward One that would like to fill the vacancy of Andrea Bedell Ware. The interview process this evening, we're going to give each candidate approximately five-minute opportunity to give a presentation of, you know, state their name, why they would like to run for the seat, and any other pertinent information that they believe that'll be useful in the six council members up here making a decision of who to appoint to the council seat. Once we go through the presentation, council members will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the candidate. Each council member shall limit the questions to one, or if they don't want to ask a question, that's fine also. We'll list the responses and go through each candidate. Once we complete each candidate, we will recess into executive session to discuss the three candidates and make a determination of who, as a council, will select to fill and appoint for that vacant seat. We will exit executive session at that time, come back to council floor, do a vote, and make our selection. And that individual who's selected will then either be how they ever want to do it, appointed to serve in the budget meeting coming up this Wednesday, and officially be sworn in, I guess, if they want a ceremonial swearing-in at the next council meeting, which will be April 9. So that's kind of the process that we're going to follow and go through with respect to interviewing each of the candidates. And as I mentioned previously, our first candidate selected at random is Brian Hilberg. So Brian, if you could approach the front right microphone, and you have five minutes to give anything you would like to tell council. Thank you.
Brian Hilberg. I reside at 246 West Homestead with my wife and my twin daughters. I grew up in Medina County, graduated from Buckeye High School. For the most part, stayed in Medina County most of my life, other than a few years for employment reasons. Came back to Medina eight years ago to start a business, and most recently, start a family. I want to run for council because I want to be involved in the process to, the process is involved to preserve our small-town values and protect our natural and historical assets. I think it's an opportunity for me to give back to the community that I grew up in, that I live in now, and that has supported our business for the last several years. Shortly after I returned to Medina, I started to become more involved in the community, Cemetery Commission, Utility Rate Review Commission. I currently sit on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm a member of the Medina County Historical Society, the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Medina, as well as a couple of nonprofit organizations, the David Leito Memorial Foundation, and most recently, started working with Sandy on the Feeding Medina County. A few years ago, I started coming to the council meetings. As most of you had noticed, I kind of became a regular fixture at most of the finance meetings. Last year, I made a decision to run for council at large. Obviously, I did not win that one. And it's been no secret And it's been no secret that in 2013, I will probably run for Ward One if I'm not, well, either way, I'll be on ballot for 2013. So I'll keep it kind of short and get to the questions. Basically, I think I've shown a history of commitment to the city of Medina, and I think I'd be a good fit for city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Hilberg?
First of all, Mr. Hilberg, I want to thank you for taking the time and the commitment that you've given to the city so far. You've got an impressive list of volunteer organizations that you do help the city with. I do have one question, though. On your resume and item number five and the specific goals you had here, you said you want to establish a program to improve the appearance of certain areas within Ward One through resident involvement and responsibility for making their neighborhood a great place to live. How do you plan on doing that?
How do I plan to do it? I have an idea. I don't know how feasible it is. I do know that a community we lived in in Virginia had something very similar to it, and they basically, what they did is, I believe it was tied to income taxes. And if you could, basically what they did is, they established it to try to improve some of the, some of the communities that needed a facelift. And what they did is they had somewhat of a rating scale. I don't know if it was an A, B, or C, or 1, 2, 3, whatever it was, but based on that rating scale, you could be eligible for a discount on your income tax. I don't remember the specific numbers. I think it was a, the difference, it wasn't a lot, but it was some. I think the difference between an A and a C was a quarter percent.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sure. Again, thank you for your interest in this position. I know you have been to a lot of our budget meetings. Mr. Coyne made it very exciting to sound that we're starting all over again here, but we do spend a lot of time on the budget. It's a big responsibility of council. Tell me an area that maybe you think needs to be increased or decreased in our city budget.
Carryovers need to come down.
I think Mr. Jordan would like you on that one.
I think, you know, if we want to preserve our small-town values and protect those natural assets we have, I think that's definitely one area that could be improved. Whether that comes from tax dollars or pursuing more grants, I think it's a definite area for improvement. Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Hi, Brian.
Hey, Denny.
Again, thanks for showing the interest in pursuing this. Having a business on the square, I'm going to ask the other two candidates the same thing. We've, as you well know, we've spent a lot of time and money on economic development. You know, we've created a position of economic developer. In the historic district, I'm just going to, for you, I'm going to use the historic district. What do you think we, as a council and administration, could do to even enhance more of what we're doing along with Main Street Medina and so forth? As a business owner and someone that potentially could be sitting next to me, and this is my good side, you know? What do you think we could do to enhance the economic development in the historic district?
I like the involvement with Main Street Medina. Personally, because I have a square, our business right there on the square, I would like to see, I understand the city is involved with Main Street Medina, but I'd like to see more involvement, maybe even a representative city council that is a board member of Main Street Medina.
Thank you.
Mr. Coleser?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for taking the time to stand in front of us. I've been in your seat a couple times in my life trying to get up here, so I do appreciate the effort you're making to try to get involved with the city. I have a question somewhat similar to Denny's, but don't use the Main Street as an example. I was going to ask, name one topic that you think that city council and the administration is not addressing at all or not enough, and how would you address this issue for improvement in our community?
Not addressing or not enough?
You know, we handle a lot of things, but maybe there's something that you think maybe we're missing.
This isn't pressure, just, you know, your good feeling.
And if you can't think of anything, that's fine, too.
Can I get back to you on that one? You know what? I honestly can't think of anything right off the top of my head. You know, I've got a business there. I know most of the people here, I know most of the people in the administration. I think if there was an issue, I probably would have been knocking on the mayor's office, asking him for it to be addressed, so. Unfortunately, at this moment, I can't think of anything right off the top of my head.
Thank you.
I just have a question. What is the most important issue facing Ward One, since you would be a Ward One representative, and how would you address it?
I think one of the biggest, I don't know about the biggest issue. I can think of two major issues. One is the empty storefronts. Two major entries into the city, North Court Street and West Liberty, and you can drive down there and you just see a lot of empty spaces. How would I address that? I don't know specifically how I would personally address it. I know I would work closely with Kimberly Rice. I think that's why we hire a economic development person. She's kind of the expert. But I would offer as much support as I could to look into some type of a program to lure businesses to those spaces. The other one that I think is equal as important is, and it's already been brought up, is the, some of the communities within Ward One, I think, could use a facelift.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. This is a general question. Just, how would, how do you view, if you're on council, how would you view your role in relationship to individual people in your ward?
Well, I think I put in my application, I think an individual council member is, they're there to bring the voice of their constituents to council as a whole, so that however council acts is representative of those constituents. So I guess it's part leader, part mentor, part babysitter. I guess you play a lot of roles to the individual constituents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's all the questions that I think we have. We appreciate your time and effort, and you can just stick around, and we'll go through the next two candidates, and then, like I said, we'll recess into executive session to discuss all candidates. But I thank you for your dedication to want to serve in public service and your efforts here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, the next individual we have is John Wetzel. John Wetzel is also the Ward One resident. He comes out here. Here he comes. Mr. Wetzel, welcome. Mr. Wetzel, as with each candidate, if you can approach the right front microphone. We'll give you approximately five minutes to give your presentation to council of why you want to serve on council and any other ideas and concerns you'd like to address to council, and then we'll open it up to council questions. So the mic is yours.
I was pleasantly surprised to see that there were only two items on the agenda that required the emergency clause, and they both seemed to be legitimate. I would have voted for them. When I first heard that the Ward Two, Ward One seat was vacant and available, I wasn't sure whether I was interested or not, but after all the begging and pleading, I decided I'd do it anyhow. I guess that didn't... I've spent a great deal of time compiling a list of good reasons why, to convince you that I'm the best choice to fill the council Ward One seat. I'm not going to give all of those, but since brevity is good, I'll pick out the most important ones. There are some things I'd like you to know. I've lived in Ward One for 52 years. My kids were all raised in that ward. I have never lived in any other ward. When we came to Medina back in 1960, the city obviously was much smaller at that time. From 1960 until tonight, I have attended, either as a spectator or as a member, hundreds, if not thousands, of council or committee meetings. At that time, back in the '60s, the population was about 8,000 people. Areas around the city, which now contains homes and businesses, were covered with trees. Many of the schools that we have now didn't exist then. The high school was much smaller, and much has changed in the years, and history will have to decide whether that's good or bad. At that time, council meetings were held in a small room over the fire station on the square, and the police dispatcher was up there also. The thing I like about council, there are several things I like being on council. It opens the door, it opens many doors. Being on council opens many doors. In addition to interacting with city people, council people also interact with county people, township people, schools, judges, occasionally state officials, and I even met a congressman Council members have the opportunity to meet people from all walks of life. Presidents and CEOs of businesses, people from both ends of the spectrum, from the richest to the poorest people in the community, and leaders in the community. I can't imagine who would not want to be on council. I know Ward One. I know its residents, I know its businesses, I know its problems, probably better than anyone. I represented it for many years as a member of council. I feel that while there are advantages to being on council, there are also responsibilities. Every decision you make affects someone's life. My biggest disappointment being on council is how few residents are interested in city government. Very few people usually attend council meetings. We should have standing room only for our council meetings. People should be standing in line to run for public offices. Maybe tonight will start that trend. It's scandalous how many people don't vote. 50% is considered great. In some precincts, it's only 7% or 8%. Other than that, there's not much I can tell you about myself that you don't already know. I would like very much to represent Ward One again, and I would be very pleased if you would give me that opportunity. Questions, please.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Lamb?
Kodak moment. Photo opportunity.
John, I asked this question, I'm going to ask the same question for each candidate. I know you really, you know, I know you, of course, I know you well. You were on city council when I was mayor, and how do you view your relationship with the constituents in your ward? If you were on city council, how would you view your role in your ward as a city councilman?
My role?
Yes.
Or my relationship?
Your relationship.
I still get accolades about things that happened when I was Ward One representative. I think I have an excellent relationship with the people in Ward One, and it never ceases to amaze me, the comments that I still get and the, I have to say, praise that I still get for the stand I took on many things.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Okay. Mr. Wetzel, first of all, thank you for taking the time to come here this evening and showing your interest in the city and for your many, 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 many years of service to the city as a councilman in other capacities. I'd like to bring your resume to light here, and item number five, you said what specific goals, you were asked what specific goals would you accomplish if you were appointed, and item E, you answered to ensure that all departments have the necessary professional and experienced leadership. How does that directly impact Ward One, and how would you implement that?
Well, I'm talking about continuing education, department heads particularly, and supervisors, superintendents. We choose them initially, I think, in a haphazard sort of way. We need somebody to fill a slot, and so we pick the person that's most likely to be able to do the job. But I'm not sure that they have the best and the latest training initially and continuing as the years go by. As far as Ward One goes, I don't think I can single out one ward, for example, the street department, or the police department, or the parks department. The same comments apply to all the wards. I can't think of any instance that's specific to Ward One. We have the same needs and services that all the other wards need, but I think that, I think we need to provide continuous, continuing education for the people in authority, technical training, and to help them do their job better.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shields?
Good to see you, Mr. Wetzel. Thanks for applying for this position. I have a question about the budget. I know you know the process well. Tell me an area where you feel maybe we need to look at either increasing or decreasing the amount of money we spend here in the city.
Well, I would say you'll notice that the first item there refers to the streets. I think it's the first item or second, and I think that probably we should spend more on streets because some of them are pretty bumpy, and I think we should increase. Now, I know we do some every year, but I think we should increase the amount we allocate for budget, in the budget for street repairs. As far as decreasing, oh, I certainly wouldn't decrease anything. The streets would be my highest priority, and of course, the antiquated water lines. Now, I know water lines are fun all their own, but I still think water lines should take higher priority.
Thank you.
Mr. Wetzel, I'm a little disappointed that you didn't say we wanted to increase legal fees, but I guess that's okay.
I had a comment about lawyers that I didn't choose to mention.
Oh, okay. Mr. Simpson?
Hi, John. How you doing?
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much for putting yourself in the position to run again for this position. As I asked the candidate before you, as far as economic development for the city of Medina, you're well aware of the enormous amounts of money that we've invested in the last several years. In Ward One, what would be some, one thing that you would do to, or that you think the city council and administration could do to enhance economic development, businesses coming in, retaining them in Ward One?
Improve the traffic flow.
Okay.
And now, let's see, I'm trying to remember where the border, so that the businesses can access streets out of town, particularly to the east. That's been a long-time problem, and I think if we could somehow redesign our streets or our routes to facilitate the flow of traffic, commercial traffic, it would be a big help.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Coleser?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wetzel, good to see you as always. Now, I know you've already addressed a couple topics, but I'm going to ask the same questions I did at the first candidate. I ask, name one topic that you think city council and the administration is not addressing at all or not enough, and how would you address this issue?
Traffic signal update. I think we have, in spite of two attempts, we are still, we still have a problem with traffic signals, timing, and I hear that frequently, and I think that's, that needs to be addressed. And again, and again, the streets, I still think they need attention, and the water lines. I've tried to campaign for years about replacing the antiquated water lines. I think the timing for this is perfect because of the recent one we had on the east side, which we had to... which we had, which was very bad apparently, and we were constantly tearing up streets. And we need to do something about the old water lines.
Thank you.
And my last question would be, just focusing on Ward 1, what is the most important issue facing Ward 1 and how would you address it?
Probably recreational needs primarily associated with Melard Park. I think there needs to be more for the kids in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time and answering our questions. You can have a seat. We're going to have one more candidate go through, and then we're going to recess into executive session to discuss each of you, each of the candidates, and come back and make a decision this evening. So, if you could stick around, that'd be great. Our final candidate for Ward 1 is coming out now is Daniel Coleman. If you can approach the front right microphone up here. Each candidate had an opportunity to give approximately five minutes or so, a little presentation about themselves and why they chose to run for the Ward 1 vacancy. So, if you can go ahead and start out, and then we'll switch to questions from council after your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm excited to have the opportunity to be the Ward 1 councilman. As a young professional, I represent the largest demographic of our city. I have a master's degree and I currently work for the Ohio State Highway Patrol. I also represent approximately 31% of the residents who, like me, rent their home in the city of Medina. I am very proud to work and live in the city of Medina. I have been involved in the community volunteering with the Domestic and Sexual Abuse Coalition of Medina County, as well as the Batter Women Shelter of Medina County. Ward 1 needs a councilperson who is accessible and will work hard for the residents. I will treat the residents with respect. I will listen to their concerns and address their concerns with adequate and timely response. The residents will know that they can contact me and that I will respond to them. I will focus on Ward 1, but realize that there is a balance between the issues and needs of the ward, as well as the issues and needs of the entire city. Joining city council will be both an honor and a challenge. As a member of council, I would be a part of a team that does the hard work of running our city. It is an exciting opportunity to become part of the leadership of our vibrant community while giving back. There are issues in Ward 1 that do concern me. Areas of our ward have struggled through these economic times and, as you can see, need rehabilitation and beautification assistance. The industrial area has successful and well-known businesses, though currently it is an area with roads needing repairs and buildings sitting vacant. With a collaborative approach, we can attract new businesses and jobs and make the industrial area a great part of the city. Also, to keep Medina moving forward, we can create a Medina City application for smartphones and tablets that will allow residents easy access to the city administration, services, events, notifications, and a geocoding feature to inform the service department of a pothole in the road or a street lamp that just needs a new light bulb. This will help streamline our city services while utilizing the latest in technology. I'm excited for this chance to work and collaborate with the members of our city council, our administration, our community, and especially the great people of Ward 1 to help keep Medina strong and vibrant. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Hi, Dan.
Hi.
Thanks for applying. I have the same question I had for the other two, other two folks that applied, and that is simply, how do you view, how do you view, if you're on city council, how would you view your relationship with your constituents?
Sure. I think I'm here to serve the residents. That's number one. Our residents are employers, and we have to treat them with the utmost respect and make sure that their needs are being serviced properly and fast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan, for your time and your phone call the other evening. I enjoyed it, and I appreciate you taking an interest in the city. Your resume is quite exclusive, or extensive, I should say. Tell me something that is not on this paper, something you've said here that makes you the best candidate.
Sure. I mean, I think one of the things that may not be written fully on that application but is implied in the job title is I'm a driver's license examiner, and I work in the Medina City, or we're located in Ward 2, actually. And one of the unique privileges I have in that job is qualifying our licensed drivers. And we get to drive around the city of Medina all day long, from 8 until 5, on the weekdays and on weekends, 8 until 2 o'clock. And it gives me a keen eye for what's going on in the city. I see things that are happening. I see traffic flow. I see just a dynamic sense of things, and I think that would provide a unique perspective on council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields?
Hi, Dan. Thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate your willingness to try to be appointed to this position. I know it's not easy. I want to talk a little bit, we spend a lot of time on council dealing with the budget. It's one of the most important things we do for taxpayers. And I wanted to get your opinion on if there's an area of the budget that you think we need to either increase or decrease as council?
Sure. I would say, from my unique advantage, infrastructure is one of the biggest keys. I know cities struggle with roads and keeping them updated, that's probably the easy answer there. But I think in general, infrastructure is one of the biggest keys. It produces jobs. It keeps the city in a great situation to attract new businesses, to attract new residents, and also to provide the best for current residents and businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
Thanks, Dan. I'm going to ask you the same question as I asked the other two candidates. The city's invested a lot of time and money in our economic development plan over the last several years. In Ward 1, do you have any ideas or plans that you could bring to council that would help improve the economic development in Ward 1, such as retaining or getting new businesses in?
I think that's a really good question. I would have to say that one of the biggest keys to potential future economic development that I've seen successful in other cities in the northeast Ohio region is a potential business incubator-like model. And we've seen the Youngstown downtown become alive again through models like that. And they've been recognized in different places across the country. I think Medina could stand to look at different innovative ideas such as the green jobs and jobs such as technology jobs that might use bigger buildings in the industrial ward, parts of the Ward 1, excuse me. And I think that would be one perhaps Avenue Council could collaborate in as a whole to attract.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Colzar?
Thanks, Dan, for taking the time to volunteer and make a commitment to the community. The question I'm asking is, I know you've already touched on a couple, but I'm asking, name one topic that you think city council and the administration is not addressing at all or not enough, and how would you address this issue?
I think this may be a bit silly, but as somebody who goes to the website a lot, it tends to be not updated easily. It's, you find a lot of misinformation on the city website or things not properly posted. And I'd say that that's, to me, the biggest thing that I've noticed, so.
Thank you.
And Dan, one last question here. What is the most important issue facing your ward, Ward 1, and how would you address it?
There are many, many important issues facing Ward 1. It's a very dynamic region in our city. I'd have to say, perhaps one that's probably most readily known is perhaps the roads running on West Smith Road. It's very dangerous to drive your car out there. You may not come back with your muffler. And perhaps, possibly the rail crossings. I've noticed that they're in pretty much disarray across Ward 1, and a lot of people like to run over those really fast, and that creates a dangerous situation for any walkers that may be nearby, anybody driving by, another driver. So, that's possibly an area that I would focus on.
Thank you. And I think that's all of our questions. We appreciate your time and your presentation and responding to our questions. What we're going to do now is we're going to recess into executive session to discuss each of the applicants for the Ward 1 vacant seat. And after our deliberations, we will return and make a decision so that everybody tonight will know which council candidate, potential council candidate will be appointed. So, I'll undertake a motion to recess into executive session.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on recessing into executive session?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colzar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0.
We'll be returning. Hopefully, we won't be that long, but if everybody can just be patient, we'll be back shortly. I'd like to reconvene this council meeting for the appointment of the Ward 1 vacant seat. We had an opportunity to discuss each of the candidates. We had some good discussion, very tough discussions in the back. Each of the candidates presented a compelling reasons why they should serve and fill the vacant seat by Andrea Boudelware. We started out with Mr. Hilberg giving a discussion as a business owner on the square, committed to going to several of the meetings and providing good information for each of us. And then, Mr. Wetzel came to give his presentation. He's a dedicated citizen. He's represented Ward 1. He's been there. He knows the city. He knows Ward 1. He's very knowledgeable about the areas of Ward 1. And then, Mr. Coleman came, gave some fresh ideas in his presentation regarding the use of the internet, some new ideas, a fresh approach to various issues that we've had with the city. I think everybody found very impressed with the presentation of each and every one of the candidates. These are very tough decisions. As Mr. Wetzel knows, he's been through them. We've had discussions in the back, but we have to come up with a decision. Each of the candidates has an opportunity, of course, to run for the seat when it comes up, I think, not this year, next year. There'll be an election for that seat, and we hope that the individuals who were not selected to be appointed would do that and continue the tradition of representing as a public servant in a city of Medina. But after deliberation, we have to make a decision. These are tough decisions for a council to make. We're selecting an individual who sit amongst us and further the interests of the city. And these are very tough decisions, I have to tell you. We had a lot of deliberations in the back, and everybody fared very well in the back. There were surprises that happened during the interview process, and we were grateful for that, that we could make the decision. But we have to come down and make a decision. And after deliberations, we made our decision. We decided that Brian Hilberg will be the next council Ward 1 representative, and we'll make a motion for that to have Mr. Hilberg fill that seat, and we'll take a vote.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I'd like to make a motion that we, that council appoints Brian Hilberg to fill the vacancy created by Andrea Boudelware's resignation from council.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colzar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0.
Again, we thank each of the candidates for their efforts, and we hope to see you back, and congratulations to Mr. Hilberg. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.